All right, now is the time where we have a select board communications. We have five minutes set aside for this. Are there any members of the select board that would like to address the public?
I have some. I don't know if anyone else received a letter from our, one of our new Kennebec County District Two Commissioners, Joe Petroski. He had come around and met with some select boards in the county prior to the election when he was running. And now, and one of the things he promised was that he would come and talk to people, like select boards, to let them know what the county budget is doing. And so I have a letter and I think no one else got it, I'll just submit it. But he is willing to come to one of our meetings to provide follow up to this letter and hear from us directly. They're going to be finished with their budget hearings. They're having hearings on February 22nd in Waterville and March 1st in Augusta, followed by a vote on March 7th. So I thought we might want to invite him to come sometime after March 7th, when they finalize their budget, because we have no actual input into it. But to hear from him and to actually meet a county commissioner, I've never done that. I didn't know if that was something maybe the Budget Committee wanted to do, or if it's better for us to do, or both, or maybe invite a couple of members to come, let them know we're going to have him come for 10 or 15 minutes. Anyway, I'll leave that.
See that, this Joe, he just.
I just thought it would be really interesting to hear from one of them directly, as opposed to, it's always just been a number on the line in the budget that we pay, so.
I agree with that.
Anybody opposed to asking him to come?
None. Do you want to lead that?
Could he come to one of our, our next joint? We have another joint in March.
We do, and that's for, I mean, I'd say primarily for presenting our budget. But I guess if I had a thought, it would be that it might be nice to talk to him before they finalize the budget. So I would encourage maybe the, the second meeting in February, if we could pull him into that one, that'd be my recommendation. Because you do have input and he knows where it's headed, like we know where our budget's headed. And so I think it might be an opportunity to, you know, respond to some of that.
What was the date they were meeting in Waterville? It's not the date, it's not, we're meeting the 27th.
My goal is to help county go prepared, well, February 22nd, Waterville, and March 1st, Augusta, followed by a vote by the county commissioners on March 7th.
So 26th is not a date, he's already meeting?
Yep. I'll, I'll reach out to him with the invitation.
Great, thank you.
Excellent. Anyone else?
Go ahead.
Two things. First thing, um, transfer station. I had a resident ask if the sand can be accessible when the transfer station is not open, like closer to the gate, far enough away where somebody's not going to back up a pickup and, you know, fill it. But like this person sands like an elderly person and then also some rental properties and the storms are not always, you know, when the transfer station is open. So just have it maybe closer to the gate. I think he said Wayne might have it accessible. He wasn't sure about Winter, where if something could be moved closer. What are your thoughts on that?
I, I know, I know in Monmouth they do a similar thing. So the transfer station is separate and they have the, the sand over by the, the public works. So I've seen that before. I, I don't know if that's a possibility.
Yeah, I can't remember what the road looks like, how much shoulder there is, if there's, if there's a place to put it, you know?
There's not on that road that we use.
Yeah, what about on the other one? The one that's closed for the contractor, that might be a spot they could do it.
Is that something we can look into?
Oh, we can look into it, yeah. I will say right off that we, the intent of the sand isn't for commercial purposes. So if someone does do plowing, it really isn't intended for that. It's intended for residential driveways and residential walkways and things. So, but, but outside of that, I think it's something we can definitely look at.
Yeah, it's just little bits for residential. But if they could just like carry a bucket to a truck and that, we're not talking about huge volumes.
Yeah, yeah.
Good idea. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, and secondly, I'd like to reopen the vote we took on Babatar at the last meeting. I had voted in the negative and it was based on information that, new information was brought to my attention that probably would have changed my vote.
Carol, excuse me, you didn't vote in the negative.
In the positive, no.
You voted yes, we all, the motion was to deny.
Sorry, yes.
And you voted yes.
Correct.
Okay, because if you voted no, you can't.
Correct, sorry. So I would like to reopen the vote.
For the application.
For the application for Babatar, for the age-friendly group. And it was, kind of goes back to what I said at the beginning, that I think anybody in the community should be welcome to be in a committee. I know the one thing that was said was that there was a, what do you call it? Restraining order from him, but the, the charges were dropped when it went to court. So I'm told that there's no restraining order after the arrest and the incarceration. And when it went to court, the charges were dropped, so there is no such thing in place. Is that?
That's not accurate. So there's a couple of things going on here. I'll just address it quickly, because I really, it's exhausting to deal with this. And the lies that he continues to perpetuate. We got a restraining order against him because he was threatening and harassing my family. We dropped the restraining order because he had been arrested three times and those arrests came with bail conditions that essentially replaced the conditions of the temporary restraining order. So he still is not allowed to be within 15 feet of my house. He is still not allowed to have direct or indirect contact with me. Those are conditions of his bail. He has an ongoing criminal case. The District Attorney's Office is bringing against him. He has an ongoing civil case that my family and I are bringing against him for his actions. And that's just the start of it. I'm just, I'm disappointed that we're discussing this.
Yes, so Carol, what you need to do is if you make your motion and you don't get a second, we will move on. So if you'd like to go.
So, but just to clarify, so there is one still in place, but for something different?
No, for the same, so when you get arrested and you get released from jail, you have bail. And the terms of your bail can be, you know, any number of things. But in this case, the judge or the, the person who he saw, on behalf of the judge, said that he wasn't allowed to be within 15 feet of my home and he wasn't allowed to have direct or indirect contact with me. That has not been resolved. There is an ongoing criminal case against him, not from me, from the District Attorney's Office, because of those issues and his behavior. That, that's still ongoing. So you could appoint him, but it would make it challenging for me. And I'd say that even if that wasn't ongoing, it would be a challenge for me. But, you know, of course I have to respect what the, the board does, but it's, it's still, those limitations are still there.
So I'm understanding that, right? The, the restraining order was dropped because the bail conditions were the same and, and there's no sense in having that redundancy?
Exactly, and there were other legal considerations around why that was done. It was a matter of expediency and, and legal. There were, there were multiple reasons, but yes, that's primarily, it was the fact that, that the bail conditions basically took the place of the temporary restraining order. So he, he's partially right, but he ignored all the rest of it in explaining the situation to you, unfortunately.
So there's other things that have actually been already presented to him and are already?
Absolutely, he's been to court multiple times to try to get out of this, yeah.
Well, you have to agree to your bail conditions to, to get out.
He did agree to his bail condition.
But then the charges were dropped and that's.
No, 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 the charges were not dropped.
No charges were dropped.
The restraining order is no longer placed because the bail conditions.
Have replaced.
Replaced this restraining, charges are still pending.
So when it was brought to court and our lawyer said we're dropping the charges, what charges were we dropping?
The town lawyer was not involved with that.
Yeah, so listen, I want to, if you had the motion to make, make the motion.
Okay, I just want to make the motion of changing my vote, if that's a correct motion.
No.
No, you would need to.
Open, reopen the vote? I'd like to make a motion to reopen the vote.
There's a motion on the floor. Does anyone want a second then? Very well, the motion fails. Thank you very much, everyone. We will move on.
Can I just say, I, I am trying very hard not to get in the middle of this. There's things I did, I don't want to have come up and I, I just, I don't want to make a decision based on what may or may not be. So I'm just really trying hard to.
Yeah, well, Carol, certainly if you ever want to discuss this, I'd be happy to tell you
Gotcha.
more about what's going on. This isn't, it's a long ways from over. We have probably six months to, to eight months at least, maybe longer to deal with the criminal case that he's dealing with and the civil side. Who knows how long that would take, but it's an ongoing issue.
Thank you very much. We now move on to boards, committees, commissions and departments. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, yes, I missed that. I wanted to get right to the.
I just soon skip it. I'll give a report.
Staff reports, you have to do two of them, whether you like it or not. First, you want to do your town manager report or treasurer report?
I'll start with treasurer's report. So the report I have is for the period from January 1st to January 31st of 2023. There was no unusual activity on the checking accounts. Reconciliation was completed. Theresa did that a couple of weeks ago. The audit is ongoing and we are continuing to try to work with the auditors to clarify the, the new account structure that we're looking at and wrap up the 2022 fiscal audit so we can have the most reliable numbers, excuse me, for our budgeting for the coming fiscal year. And the budget process is ongoing. We're headed on the downhill slope on this one. We do have a number of public engagement opportunities. The next is our budget meeting on Wednesday, February 15th at 6:30 PM. That's the third set of departments. We, after that, in, in March and then in May, have two public hearings where we can have public input and, and, and feedback. And of course, town meeting vote is in June. So this is a quick summary of that process and where it's going. The numbers should be about 58% for expenditures and revenues. I will say that there's always some things that look a little bit off, but I'll try to point out what's, what, what those are and then identify where things are normal. So real estate payments for the month are down, but they're on track for the year-to-date. And part of the reason for that is people had paid ahead. So we actually last year, or last month, had a, a bit of a, a lead on those payments. And this month, folks are, are essentially just caught up. And so the due date for taxes is the end of February, February 24th. So next, next Friday is the, is the deadline for taxes. So the second half, so I just want folks to be aware of that. But if you see an anomaly in the, in the revenue for taxes, it's because of that end of the, end of the cycle that we're in. Townwide revenues are down for the month due to lower tax collections, but they, they do look, you know, on track for the year. Expenses are up for the month and the year-to-date. Capital expenses on roads and the cost of education account for a bulk of those increases. And that's a pretty standard thing this year, given those budgets. And then we have essentially revenue and expenses relative to the budget are very much on track. And I think most departments are actually doing pretty well and a little bit ahead of schedule on revenues. So, and a little bit under on expenses. So we're, we're where we want to be and I'm happy to take any questions on that.
Great.
All right.
Nice report.
Town managers.
You may move on.
Thank you, Dennis. All right, so this is a bit more engaging. We have employee evaluations happening in February, so I'm excited about that. It's, it's a pleasure to be able to evaluate our staff. They do such a fantastic job. They make it easy almost, almost all the time. Everybody's got things to work on, as do I. But it's an enjoyable process because we have a good team and everybody's working together. Work on the comprehensive plan is continuing to be a priority. We, if you haven't taken the survey, please take the survey. We have multiple options available, paper, short form, long form. We've received over 200, 208 survey responses to date, which I'm, I'm very pleased with. That's over 10% of our adult population. And I'm looking to get 300 by the end of March. That's, I think it's a bit of an ambitious goal, but that would be a really good return rate, extraordinary in my view. I'm happy with what we've got, but I want to hear from people and so does the comprehensive plan committee. So if you haven't taken that survey yet, if your cousin or brother or best friend or neighbor hasn't spread the word, because it is a great way to help direct the town over the next 10 years. Holiday hours, Monday, February 20th, 2023, that is President's Day, the town office and library will be closed. And then on a, a, a not very positive note, due to staffing shortages, the YMCA, Kennebec County, will not be able to offer swim lessons at the town beach this summer. So that's related to just this overall issue of personnel. And it's, it's just a real downer for me because I was excited about getting back into that post-COVID. I think it does kind of speak to the point that we should be looking at developing some of those programs in-house so we can develop the staff, the connections with the high school kids that are there, working, all that stuff. It's important. So that wraps up administration and personnel. Moving on to roads, traffic and parking and safety. Winter road plowing has of course been ongoing. We receive regular reporting from both of our pile contractors and the software that we use to help manage the, the fleet. It's been a great relationship. Scott Horn is in my office once or twice a week, every week, whether there's snow on the ground or not, to check in and see how things are going, if there's any issues. And I will say that I, I've received a, a lot of positive feedback about the condition of the roads, level of service. I had a resident who was involved with town work for a number of years. He's been a resident probably for 40 or 50. And he said he's never seen it this good and he really understands what that means. So I, I appreciate that kind of feedback. You know, we are paying a premium for it, but we're getting a very good service. Spring is on the way and we will begin posting roads to limit heavy loads this week.
Wow.
And the reason we're doing that is because we work with a thawing index that's a, a tool used by many towns in the state of Maine, also New Hampshire, Vermont. It's recommended by the Maine DOT and they look at the forecast, the temperatures over the course of the, the winter and, and they give an index of how likely it is to have thawing and then subsequently the damage that might occur. This week is going to be something special, I'll put it that way. I tapped my maple trees on Super Bowl Sunday, which is a record, but it's, it's, it's amazing. I've already got bugs in them. You know how you get those little black bugs in your sap? They're there. So anyway, spring's coming, the roads are melting, so we are going to be posting the roads. Anybody doing work should be aware. We do have a process for allowing roads to be utilized in certain conditions for certain loads. All they have to do is reach out to the town office, to me as the road commissioner or deputy road commissioner, Matt Seams, and we'll talk about the situation and find a way, if we can, to make it work. I had somebody call about a concrete delivery and I said, well, that we can, if you go when the road's frozen, there's no problem. Otherwise, we need you to do it next week when, when the roads aren't frozen, because there is potential for damage. So we do work with people whenever we can. Let's see, Maine DOT completed the right-of-way work, survey work for Church Road. That right-of-way was very important to being able to determine where we may possibly put the alignments for the two possible construction options for the sidewalk. Granted, there are several options, some of them don't include construction. But in order to have an informed public meeting and discussion, we needed to have that right-of-way work done. And so that's been completed. It has been submitted to Gorel Palmer. They'll, they will now be working on something like a 20% design, basically looking at where those alignments might go on either side of the road, both sides of the road. And then we can have that meeting. So that's where that is currently and we will of course notify folks when we start getting ready to, to, to make that happen.
Did you, I might have missed it. Did you say, can I, sorry to interrupt?
No, go ahead.
Might still happen in February? We're looking more like March.
I, I don't know.
Okay.
They, I would expect it would be March, because I haven't seen anything yet, no email traffic from them. So it's probably March.
I would expect we'd have like a two-week warning as a minimum. So that could be February, otherwise that's not fair to residents.
Yeah, no, no, we, we certainly would have at least a couple of weeks' notice and I'll probably even just walk around or, or call and ask, hey, when are you guys around? Because we're small enough, we can do that. So we are beginning the design work for the library parking lot paving again. That work was approved in this year's budget. To do it correctly, we have to also do a little bit of survey work because part of our driveway is on the property formally of the Cornerstone Cafe. And so we want to make sure that we have an easement secured for maintenance in order to allow that paving to happen. We also want to make sure that the grade of that parking lot is contemplated because we're also looking at replacing the access ramp to the building and we might be putting in an apron and we want to have those things come together and not have water issues with the building. So that's been started. Also, roadwork RFPs will be issued for the spring and summer projects before the end of February. So we have two or three of those we'll be putting out. RFPs were issued, moving on to maintenance and transfer station, but primarily maintenance in this case, for the fire suppression system at the fire station and also an RFP for the library work that I just mentioned briefly. The access on the front, access on the back on the second floor and also some work to the, one of the, the back rooms in the building. All of that, those RFPs will come in and then we will determine if or how we want to proceed and with whom. I expect the select board will be considering a proposals in March on those so we can then have that in time for the budget and be in, in a good spot to move forward with the work.
Although the budget isn't needed for three of those projects or two of them, because we already have the money for those.
We do, again, that's the caveat, provided that the costs haven't increased to the point where we need to look at additional funding. That's, that's the caveat that I was, yeah. But thanks for hanging that one up. And then we are working to revise the LED lighting proposal for the town office. They did have some lights that didn't, sorry, I just hit the microphone twice there. But, so we had lights that were in the proposal that didn't need to be replaced because they, because they already were LED. So we're revising that one and we'll have a better cost estimate to talk about in the context of if, potentially for that grant. And then the last item I have on this report is maintenance staff are reviewing options to replace the first floor office front door with one that has a window. Because I can't tell you how many times we go in and out of that and there's a lot of traffic and you miss people by inches, inches, because there's no visibility. You open that door and you don't know who's behind it. And so we're wanting to replace that. It'll probably be $1,500 to $2,000 because it's a fire door. But to me, that's a wise investment because someone getting injured, not, not worth it. So it's not, so anyway, that's my report and I'm happy to take any questions.
Excellent. Anybody have anything?
Nice job.
Thank you. Yeah, there's a lot of irons in the fire here, Eric, and you're doing a great job.
There are, thanks.
Thank you for the update on the library. I think that'll be great when we talk about the paving, but I'm like, we need those computers upstairs for people to use. So that's good, that's moving forward. That was one of my questions, appreciate it.
Good.
Excellent. Now we come to boards, committees, commissions and departments, five minutes for this. Anybody, did you see the list? Anybody have any questions about that or anything to say?
I just had a, I had just reviewed the minutes from the Budget Committee meeting and saw that our heating fund is growing and that we have availability for purchasing firewood and having it delivered. Can, can we also work with oil or is it there?
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
It's not specified and that's just.
Oh, we always have given.
I just wanted to make sure, because it's not, because it's just talking about firewood. So I want to make sure that our heating fund, because I know there's lots of people that might be needing that and maybe we should, yeah, remind that.
Well, it's, it's a great reminder and I will say we do try to match the heat. We, we do match the heating source people have available.
Right.
They have oil, they have wood. We might make a BTU decision if they're able to handle the wood. Not everybody is anymore. I'm getting close. But four quarter years, it wears on you.
Yeah, right.
But in any event, we, we match, if someone has propane, we get propane delivered. If they have K1, we deliver K1. So, and it is available and we, we do have that fund. Thanks, John, for bringing that up.
Excellent.
Eric, I'll just mention to you that if you weren't splitting trees the size of redwood, it's a lot easier.
That is a good point. It was a very large tree.
They were large.
And we all saw. Excellent. We move now to public communication. Members of the public may address the select board. I don't know if that's you. Is that you? We have, we have a public. There are some folks, if you are online and want to address the select board, you may do that as well, if you want to unmute. Otherwise, we'll turn it over to you, Mr. Durgen.
Okay.
All right, whenever you are ready. Yes, sir, go for it.
Are there other people?
No, sir, no, no, there's a, a couple Zoom people, but no one's, no one's saying anything.
Okay.
Yes.
Before I begin, a couple of things. Eric, thank you for hitting your mic. It's the only thing I heard coming out of that speaker.
That's right, you got to speak closer. Give the reminder every week.
Thank you, Eric. And to, I just wanted to say I'm pleased with your action on the last motion that was made as a board. Okay. Hello, I'm Greg Durgen and I live on Route 41 here in town. I'm a member of the working group for the softball project along with Dennis, Steve and other residents. But I'm here speaking only for myself tonight. I believe one of the select board's goals for this year is a more, is more communication with the RSU School Board on issues or commonalities besides or beyond the school budget and the impact on our tax dollars. It's a laudable goal to be sure. I believe face-to-face communication between the two groups can lead to an understanding and approval for using some of the school fields and facilities in the spring for the softball program, the Rec Recreation Committee sponsors. I would like the select board to take the initiative to meet soon with the school board on behalf of the softball project and rec committee to use the already-built facilities located there at a site, as a site for the softball field that has yet to be finalized, because the site for the softball field has yet to be finalized by the working group. The rec committee already does a fine job securing facilities for their fall and winter programs, although from what I understand, they are not allowed to have a key to use the new bathrooms built last summer down by the track. Non-Redfield residents commit between $2 and $3 million a year to support of the RSU. I think that would be at least get us, get the residents and the rec committee, at least get a key to be able to use the bathrooms at the fields. On some Saturdays in the fall, there were 100 kids and adults up there with no bathroom. The Word Community is used in the name of the school because the schools and facilities were designed for community use when the founding school board members dating back in 1972 submitted their plan to the state for approval, a true community school. And in the years that it opened, 1976 and on, for about five or six years, the school was actually open 24 hours a day for community use. I hope I didn't give my age away, but I was there. So thank you for listening and have a good rest of the year. I'm going home and eat dinner.
Greg O'Malley tells me you're also still there and his favorite, O'Malley says that you're still there and his favorite substitute this week, so just, just to be clear.
On the way out, I enjoyed, I enjoyed working with O'Malley three days last week. Nice kid.
Unfortunately, he was there the whole week. Thank you very much, Greg. We appreciate it, yeah.
So on that.
Yep.
Would it be appropriate when we meet with the RSU coming up here for budgets? Would that be an appropriate time to talk about that? I was just looking for the date.
So we might want to give a heads up to the superintendent though, because they're planning on it being a budget meeting. And if we come with a different topic, that's not fair if you haven't given the warning.
It's not a money issue, the opposite.
I know, but.
But I, I do think I would love to, I wanted to ask this question anyway, so stay right there for a minute, Greg, if you would. And that is, I wanted to ask, what's the appropriate venue? Like I would like, I mean, it is the RSU, so that means all the towns have an interest, not just Redfield. It is in Redfield, but all the towns have an interest in use of that facility. And I am almost as old as Greg and remember distinctly, and I still think of it every day, that it's the Maricopa Community School and that was the way it was set up. And I would love to see if we could get kind of a unified approach from all the select boards, right? To talk to RSU about enhancing public, the public's ability to participate and use this campus, right? And so how, is that a thing that, that select boards talk? And so how, is that a thing that, that select boards talk to each other?
Oh, absolutely. That's politics.
Yeah.
So like, how do we make that happen?
Well, I mean, I think you would work with the board, maybe write a letter, maybe make some phone calls. Most of the select boards that are in the, in the area in RSU, I think have all of their contact information available. So I think that if there's something that a board member wanted to take on as an initiative to try to organize some of that discussion.
That, that I do. So my key question really goes, can I do that or does that need to be you as the supreme imperial commander?
Well, I'm certainly not the supreme imperial commander, but I think that that's a hundred percent purview and appropriate for the select boards. Or a member duly authorized, right? To, to reach out and try to make that happen.
I duly authorize Steve.
I duly accept.
I will just mention that there are three town managers you're sitting with one. And the other is just a three-member select board in North Burnet. And they usually have like a first, second and a third, so you have to find out which one of them is the contact that would deal with that.
Thank you.
Excellent.
All right, thank you.
You can move from that.
Great. Thanks for.
Excellent. Thank you very much. We move on to all business now. We have item twenty-three zero seventy-six, which is to discuss draft select board procedures. These are the items that we have been looking at. I think we said, had this last meeting to take a look at some things. And we had another opportunity to pour over this and this latest draft. Are there any questions or any, any statements about the select board procedures? I just want to say that I really appreciate this. I think this is important because I think when you start on the select board, I think there's usually like a year-long learning curve. Then the second year, you start to feel more comfortable. And by that third year, where you feel like you kind of have an idea of what's happening. You have to do all of the running for the office again. And so I think it's a, a really nice way to bring some, some continuity, some consistency. And just try to always be as efficient as possible. So I just want to say thank you Catherine and Eric both for doing this work.
So I had asked for people to let Eric, you know, to funnel through Eric any comments and concerns and we didn't get any. So I took what I had for notes from the last time and the only things that changed are highlighted. Which was very little. And then we included all of the appendices, not because we really wanted you to read them all. But because if we're going to adopt something, it's important to know that they are there. But what we had discussed as a board last time was to just reference them, that they would be available on the website. And so my question, so anyway, so there's something on page one that was highlighted and then. Different people on the board had suggested that we expand the comp plan and the capital plan. And I didn't really know how to do that, so I didn't, I just highlighted them. And I think we talked about this being like a working document that would be continuously revised. Not continuously, but you know, as, as things arise, we would, we would do that because it's a procedures thing. And so I thought we could just leave those highlighted that we know we need to add more information there. And I think it's down in like page thirty, oh, my mouse just, it's down on like page thirty-two is the next thing. Come on, little thingy. So. On page thirty, we don't have a lot of these offices that existed in Saco. So I thought we should strike those out because they're not relevant. And then on the appendices, I said, we should add a statement of where to locate all of them. Maybe write what heading they are on, under on the website as some things are not readily apparent. Like I, I think I asked recently, where's the fairgrounds management plan? And I think it's under Trails Committee. And I wouldn't think to look at Trails for fairgrounds. And so I think it might just be useful to make a little index of those sorts of things. Appendix A is the important one. It's the resolution to adopting select board's rules of conduct and voting. And that wasn't shared last time, so I wanted everyone to see it so that you would know what we were voting on. And then Sue Ray and Val Palmerlow, former select board members from about ten years ago. Had done a really nice job with a select word orientation list. And I thought we should just maybe strike out the last couple of lines of that that were kind of personal thanking a board member or something. But I thought that was a, a good suggested orientation list. So that way each year, whoever the chair is with the town manager can say, okay, these are kind of the things we need to make sure we go over. And talking with Dennis about this, he suggested that we could do this as a, a recording.
Yeah, it could just be, I mean, it could be a narrated slideshow that just basically helps people go through and lead through that sort of thing.
Right. And that could be recorded so that when you're a new member or looking to become a new member. You could go on and watch this and you could look at the documents on your own. And then if you become elected or before that, if you have questions, you could come and ask somebody to go over those things with you that weren't clear. And that way we wouldn't be spending hours going over the same things each year. But touching more on the highlights. We didn't, we have a conflict of interest and recall process ordinance, but it wasn't in the original. Saco didn't have that listed, so we should include that because it is something we have and it's in the boards committees and commissions handbook. And we have our standards of conduct for public meetings, which hangs on the wall. So it seems to me that would be important to include. And so just briefly, I know, then I'm finished looking at appendix A, it just says that, you know, we. We take notes and we keep them. We use Robert's rules as our basis. Our agenda follows as such. And then the order of precedence of motions states how many people are, if it's debatable or privileged or things like that. And that comes from Robert's rules. So that's the only thing that's listed in an appendix that is not a Reed Field specific document that already exists. So if we approve this, we would be approving that.
One comment on that. I think that there has been a shift in the board's position on workshops and public hearings. And the desire really to move those as much as for, as forward as much as possible. So that the participation can happen sooner rather than later. I just think that that's something worth noting is that, that, that agenda isn't necessarily rigid. Especially if the board wants to move any piece out of, out of order for the benefit of the public or, or otherwise.
Yep. So we could add that statement. I think that would be appropriate.
Yep. So it's just so long, it's hard to. Everything that's changed from the original is still highlighted?
Yes.
Okay. So like in the rules of conduct or voting was much changed? I don't see much highlighted in that area at all.
There wasn't any change.
Okay, thank you. That's what I just wanted to know. And one thing I found. Curious, it just stood out to me at the very beginning, page one. Back there.
I went back to the check register.
The vision.
I, is that, I can't remember, Eric. Did you put in our vision there? No.
What's the red one?
There are two red ones, the top.
The board vision. So the thing I found like doesn't really have much to do with the board. Or maybe the town of Reed Field is an opportunity for everyone to have rewarding employment. I don't, I don't know. I found that was interesting.
Well, you've told us how many people have businesses in town. You've told us how many people have businesses in town.
Okay, that, let's be serious. I think the majority of people in Reed Field don't work at Reed Field. Rewarding employment, I mean, yes, we want them to have employment. It's just, it's a very odd.
It's the Saco board vision. And so that's why I put in, what is our vision statement? But no one replied with what it is and I don't know.
I just would like.
Where to find it.
What is this Saco you keep talking about? What, what do you mean?
So this started months ago, I took the Saco Select Boards Procedures Manual. And, and revised it, like cut it down hugely.
Okay.
To be specific to Reed Field. And so it took huge sections out. I rewrote sections from their thing so that it would be for Reed Field. And I mentioned at the last meeting that Eric had said that that's fine to do. Town share those things, anything that is published and put out onto the internet is shareable in that way. And I always feel it's very important to reference who original authors are.
Okay. I just don't think that vision fits Reed Field.
Well, it isn't ours.
Okay. So thank you.
So I just took, okay, we, I took Saco and replaced with Reed Field. And but that's why it says at the end, what is our vision statement?
Okay. So that's going to be removed.
But we need to put a vision. If we have one, do we have one?
I don't think the board has one. You do have your goals, but the board is, to my knowledge, never developed a vision for their work. We could look at the comprehensive plan vision, we could, you could develop your own. I think that's entirely appropriate. That might be something you want to look at addressing.
So we could just take it out for now or we could put in.
Insert TV here.
You know, to be determined if the board elects to have one.
Could also be an agenda item for our August retreat. And that would be a good, a good use of that. We flag that as a, to be done.
Yeah. So, so you want to remove it, remove what we have here until we can replace it with a vision?
And you had talked about making a glossary, which we haven't gotten to. So I think that's something that.
That's something else I'd like to do.
I mean, a, a thing that gets added to it at some point this year.
Right. And a glossary would just be, you know, some of the things that we just bandy about, like warrants and articles and executive sessions. What does that mean? And these things, what is the review, the warrant review, what does that mean? So those sorts of things I think are important to have. Absolutely. Any other questions about the vision? We'll move, or excuse me, the manual, we move forward.
So I would make a motion to accept the select board. I'm going to get the right name here. Does it have a name? The rules in order of business for the town of Reed Field. Procedures manual for board members with the so noted. Sections about removing the board vision. And that we want to add a glossary. And that the appendices will not be included, but will be noted where they are available on the website. Did I hit everything?
I think you did. It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second. Wait.
Yeah.
Quick move.
Who will? Access to these appendices and how it's going to be linked and how this document will be stored, I guess, is where I'm still thinking. So.
Well, I think it should be, well, it's public, so it should be on the website. And it should be sent to each new board member when they are elected. If they haven't already received it, if they haven't already reviewed it.
I think the, the bulk of the document, the document itself is in Word. We can save it as OCR PDF. And the appendices would be something we have to work on and make sure that we have all those in a format that's accessible. And you wanted me to talk about that more.
Yeah, I'd like to make an amendment to your motion to make sure that we, before this goes anywhere. If it's approved, that it is in an accessible format and function for moving forward.
I'll second that.
The amendment to the motion is to make sure that there is an accessible option of this before we move forward. Adding that to the original motion, what we're doing now is we are voting on the amendment to add the accessibility option before moving forward. All in favor, is there any discussion on the amendment? All in favor of adding the accessibility amendment? Thank you very much. Therefore, the motion as amended includes the way Catherine's changes, including the appendices. And then the way they're denoted, as well as the distribution. But all under the auspice of having an accessible copy before anything moves forward. That's where we are.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Now, is there any discussion, further discussion about this, select board procedures? Excellent. All in favor? Thank you very much. It is unanimous. Great job.
Check off one goal.
Yay, we did a select board goal. Our next item, we have thirty minutes for, it's item twenty-three zero seventy-seven. It's consider the town meeting budget and warrant, which is our second draft budget. Don't know if we'll need this much time. We know that we have another budget meeting coming up Wednesday. Eric, do you want to give us a heads up?
And we're on page what now, like?
In the Paquita, yes.
Thank you.
It's a really long document.
It is. Yeah. So there's a lot included here, but the, the draft, second draft document, this is a summary document. So this shows expenditures and revenue either at the, the revenue line level or the division level for, for the budget. So this isn't all the detail. This kind of gives a summary of where things are. It was last updated on February ninth. And I guess I'll start by saying this draft includes a few things that are purely speculative. But the two biggest are the school and county budgets. When you look at this budget, you see that there's a, you know, overall expense and revenue. Because they do offset a, a large increase over the prior fiscal year. And I want to talk about this in the context of things that we can control and things we can't, or at least have very little control over. And, and those include the school budget, which I have slated at a ten percent increase. I hope it's not that significant, but I wouldn't be surprised if, if it was. The county budget, I have slated at eight percent. I have every confidence that they'll do their best to keep it under that. But with the way things are going with the cost of labor materials. And many other things, it's going to be hard for folks not to see increases in that, in that range. And there's a few other factors I think are affecting the school that we'll hear a lot more about when the select board meets with them. For, for your joint meeting. But so when you look at that school budget, that is around three hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars in increase. That I, I think could be potentially out there. Again, that's purely speculative. And that has a lot of impact on the, on the, on the budget and the mill rate that we have. Because this really is a combined mill rate, combined budget. Even though we don't have control of those pieces, I want to show the board and the public what the impact on their, on their wallets going to be. And the only way to do that is to include placeholders for those, for those lines. So that's education. We have a roughly twenty-eight thousand dollar increase projected for county tax. Again, another one that they just tell us how much to pay, that's it. We can ask nicely, as we will, we talked to Joe, to help us out and the same thing with the school board. But those two numbers are big. You then look at other large expenditures. The biggest is the proposal for a fire truck to be purchased. That is budgeted at six hundred thousand dollars. So that adds a lot, more than the school and the county combined easily. So you add those things up and then the probably nine or ten thousand dollars in additional financing costs. And we're over a million dollars between the county, the fire truck, the school. Some of those things may materialize, some of them may not, but we're, we're looking at it as if they are, you know, reality at this point. Some other items that we should be thinking about are, we do have about fifty thousand dollar increase in the cost of our roads budget. That's the operating budget and that is again related to things like the cost of materials, wages and, and. Getting the work done. That budget has been reviewed by the road committee and was recommended by the road committee. We do have an option to look at that again up for, for, in front of the month or so I'd say. But it doesn't surprise me that we're seeing that increase given the way things are going. Another big item that we have an increase that's worth noting is in. Maintenance and administration, they're not big number wise, but for, for maintenance, there's a ten, ten percent increase, but it's only sixteen thousand dollars. But it's only sixteen thousand dollars, a lot of that does have to do with with um uh the eight percent increase in wages that we're seeing across the board. Uh and then some other small increases to adjust for the cost of running our buildings, fuel, all of those things that that need to be accounted for, so. Uh in aggregate, there are a lot of things happening that we can't necessarily control. However, um we have put together a budget that tries to balance those things out, uh we have revenues coming in. Uh admittedly, a a fair amount of our revenue is coming from reserves. Some of that is is planned and thoughtful, uh and I think is a responsible use of funds that are designated. Uh for reserves to help offset the cost of taxes as they get bigger. Um for example, um you know, we do have the road uh reserve, we have a uh reserve for. Uh the library uh for conservation, and so where we looked at and we could see that there was an opportunity to maybe draw down a little bit of that. Uh and still have a healthy balance, um we've done that in a number of cases. So if you take all of that together, uh what you see is probably uh an increase in the town's budget. The town side of maybe one hundred to one hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that that is probably within our control. Um and if you back out the transfer station, which is forty eight thousand. Uh we don't really have control over that because we're getting charged for the tipping and hauling, which is a majority of our of our operating costs there. So uh we're looking at, uh you know, say say a hundred thousand dollars roughly on a on a three million dollar municipal budget. So we're looking at a very small uh percentage increase, I'd say, uh you know, one to two percent on the municipal side. For these expenditures, um once you look at all of those other things that are that are happening, and again, some of them are still up for up for grabs, up for discussion. Uh the net impact of all this. Uh is that we would be expecting about a six to seven percent increase in the tax rate. Uh and that would include. And I I guess I'm saying the tax rate in the impact on taxpayers, so whatever people paid last year, they would expect to pay six or seven percent more. If the school budget isn't as big as it is, if uh the county budget isn't as big as we expected. Uh if we decide not to purchase a fire truck, um which I I at this point, I I think we should because it was supposed to be done in two thousand and eighteen. Uh but those things can make a difference there, but uh the one thing I also wanna point out is. When you look at the COVID impacts, uh we did decrease both the school and the municipal budgets for two years straight. Uh and that was a good thing, it helped people out, but that's not sustainable. Uh and so uh when I when I did some comparisons, uh I looked at what um. Uh how how things had changed since twenty twenty, the the twenty twenty fiscal year, which is the 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 pre-COVID fiscal year. Through um the the current budget of twenty twenty four, so twenty twenty, twenty one, twenty two, twenty three, so four, four years. Uh we're looking at a five point four percent increase over that full period. So in that context, it's not terrible, um that's about, you know, one or two percent a year. When you account for, you know, what happened during COVID. We can always do better, we always wanna do better, but um. I think that the budget that that's been developed, uh and you'll hear it from budget committee and committees, I expect. Uh is a good one that meets the needs of our community responsibly. Uh we're not cutting corners to save money where those corners are gonna have to be patched uh at a greater expense in the future. So uh that's my real, um I guess, short summary of of the budget, uh there's a lot of detail, if anybody has any questions or wants to talk about anything specific.
Great, uh I would just say thanks again to the budget committee, uh everyone who gives their time. Uh to sort of be the first line of of analysis in these numbers and things like that, so. Uh really nice to have that joint meeting last time, uh anyone from the select board uh have any questions for Eric for this draft of the budget?
Yep.
Go for it, Sean.
I too would just thank the.
Sorry.
Budget committee uh and the joint meeting, I really appreciate hearing their perspective together and going over some of the things. Eric, the big one was obviously the fire truck in our discussion on municipal bar borrowing, uh the bonding and there was another rate increase and. You were gonna look into that, what what did you find out there?
So I haven't had a chance to get back to the interest rates yet, um but I have talked to the chief. Uh he will be available for probably fifteen minutes at the start of that uh meeting on Wednesday, the budget committee meeting, to talk about. That with them um specifically, uh and even though it's not in the discussion. Um for the department, it's very relevant, so he'll be there to talk about that. Uh and he is looking at a revised um cost estimate for that truck, uh the one we were working on, there were a number of fuzzy factors, right? One was the interest rate, big one, uh the other was the actual cost of the truck, we had an initial quote last June, or not last June, last March. Uh I think for around five hundred and twenty five thousand, we said, well, we we don't wanna cut ourselves short, we're gonna just assume it's gonna be closer to six. But we'll have real numbers on that within, I'd say, within the month, uh and. That'll help us understand better what that big number looks like, uh and I do, as as you know, to need to get out a a call to um. The main municipal bond bank to get some more reliable numbers, again, it's still speculation next fall. But uh they they usually do a very good job of giving us numbers that are a quarter percent or so high. Which is safe.
Yep.
And I guess I just wanna make sure I point out to all of us as well as the general public that. When we say that the budget goes up one point one million dollars, that doesn't mean we're. Spending that out of money we have to collect this year. Because we would be bonding that fire truck and that would take, I don't know how many years we're gonna do it, but let's just say it might be. Sixty thousand dollars a year that we pay over twelve, fifteen, twenty years. And that's part of our capital expense plan, so it's not, uh we would. It actually gets expensed because we've also talked about the fact that if we can do it by taking the bond out. If you pay for your fire truck upfront, you get a significant discount of, well, used to, I don't know if they still do it, but like ten percent.
Ten to fifteen, depending.
Ten to fifteen percent, so if they get their, if it's a six hundred thousand dollar truck and you can save sixty thousand dollars by taking your bond out and paying it. That's awesome, um and that, uh interest rates will probably only go up further in the future, so that, you know, even. Compounds the savings more, um so that's really important. Um I had one question on something in the summary revision sheet, which is one twenty two, the page. And what was it? Oh, um it said increase the roads capital by fifty thousand dollars to adjust for planned expense, added twenty five thousand to use of F B.
So use of fund balance.
Fun balance.
Yeah, I I try to annotate some of the stuff.
No, that's fine.
But uh, yeah, so the um uh the costs um went up in part because. Projects that we were planning on doing this year will need to be moved forward.
Right.
So in order to do that, you budget the expense and you also budget the revenue, which would have been used this year to offset that, so. That that's kind of a shift there, and then we also expect a a cost increase on completing those projects, so that's that's what that means.
Okay, perfect, that was it for me, thank you.
Cool.
Karen, you good?
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
So I just. I'm just gonna repeat what I keep saying is. Um in this economy, a million dollars increase this year is just really hard to swallow. I understand a lot of it's C R S U and I can't wait to see um their budget. Um I do have a lot of things, just to clarify where some of the increases are coming from, and thank you for starting your talk on saying. Some of these maybe things that we can put up, but some of them aren't, um so I guess I'd like to see if there's anything we can't. So I thought we already had set aside monies for several years for a tire truck, haven't we?
We we've been paying debt service on a fire truck, what what we have been doing in addition to to paying the debt service on the existing. Um and I'll just rate at that point, um I'll say that what we try to do with fire truck purchases is not do them all at once. Um and we try to spread the the cost out over a timeframe that's reasonable. Um this last fire truck that we purchased, we paid it off in seven years, that's exceptional, uh because it means we're paying less in interest. That um debt service will get paid off this company, the the fiscal year that we're budgeting for. So next year, we'll see a drop in our debt service level, which gives us the option, a little bit more capacity for borrowing. Whether that's for a fire truck or something else, that that change is happening, so we try not to overlap. Um and it's one reason why we pushed this out so far, the only real impact financially, um as far as out of pocket impact. To the community on that purchase this year would be one interest payment, uh which is pretty modest in the grand scheme of things. But next year, we will have, you know, a little bit higher level of debt service because that fire truck uh is is gonna need to be paid for. With the new bond, if if it's approved, and that will continue for, I think, seven years. Uh another short one, not because we had a good rate and we thought it was a good idea, or we had the debt service capacity, but because we think the rates are not great. Um and it makes sense to pay it off sooner with a lower interest rate than a twenty year uh bond might have. Uh an interest rate that's one point or one and a half points higher. So uh we do also have a reserve for the fire department and we're pulling seventy five thousand dollars out of reserve. To offset the purchase cost of that fire truck, and that's included in the revenue side of the budget. Uh so there is some mitigation of the impact of this, but we still have to borrow five hundred and twenty five thousand potentially. Uh and that's where the cost comes in.
So the six hundred thousand that's saying on the twenty twenty four budget.
Yep.
Is gonna be on the warrant. As a capital improvement, but stretched out over years?
Yes, so we have it in two places, one is the the actual expense, because we have to, if we're gonna spend six hundred thousand dollars, we have to have it in there. And the voters have to approve it. Uh what is also there is the debt service that we pay on that, normally that includes principal and interest. Uh but because of the way the debt schedule falls, uh we believe that at this point, this fiscal year, we will only be making that initial interest payment. Uh but in the future, and I can look at that, I'll tell you what it would look like. So this year, we expect we're going to see, just a second, roughly twelve thousand dollars in interest. Um on on this fire truck, uh if it's purchased, next year, we're looking at something like eighty seven thousand. Um but we're also seeing debt service retired for the other fire truck, so they offset to a great degree.
How much is the current fire truck fund?
The current fire truck bond is. Truck bond, where are we? Uh let's see, fifty two thousand, fifty three thousand, basically, so.
So are we saying, what what indications do we have that this purchase has to be like this year? I know you said we put off, put off, as far as I understand, like housing interest rates right now are at seven percent, like we're talking. Out of out of this world high, so it seems like. Maybe not the great year to say we really have to do this now, it would be put off, put off, it's like.
Yeah, it it's something that um that we're looking at and that we have looked at to some extent, right now, my 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 initial estimate was four percent. So commercial borrowing, uh residential borrowing uh is different than government borrowing, government ball borrowing is more secure. Uh and therefore, uh because it's backed by by the by the masses. And there's a long history, they were forever businesses, uh so the interest rates are lower. Um and we also work with other main municipalities to go typically through the main bond bank, which is essentially a nonprofit. They they're not responding to shareholders, they're um responding to the needs of the community, so there is another saving. So the interest rate, it's it's still way more than it was a couple of years ago, the budget committee has said that they have concerns, a couple of concerns. Um one is uh that interest rates, you know, might stay flat or not drop. Um or or could increase, who knows, um over the next couple of years. I I defer to them on a little bit of that, I almost keep, you know, keep up on what's happening in the broader economy, but I I defer to their judgment on the interest rates. Um and they also are concerned that um that we don't wanna get caught shorthanded, uh which is essentially what um Chief Mank has stated. Could be the situation if the fire trucks that we currently have in our inventory, um if if one of them is to go down, we don't necessarily have. The right mix, uh and he'll talk about this more on Wednesday, but he's looking to replace uh an older, less functional truck. With a newer, a brand new truck with with a greater capacity, so what we're also doing here is adding capacity. Uh but the the main reason that that I'm, I guess, supporting this, and I think that it's a it's a necessary expenditure, is because our fire chief has recommended it. Uh and I I do put some faith in his process and rationale, uh as the the really the lead. Uh a um uh department in the mutual aid organization, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks, there's.
Typically, we're replacing a truck that's thirty plus years old.
I understand, I'm just saying this is a really rotten.
It's a big one, and I wish we bought it last year, because we would have been better off, yeah.
Okay, um.
Yeah.
One other thing, let's so administration, looking back two years, is like up two hundred thousand dollars. Um in every category, it seems there was something projected in twenty twenty four in office equipment, thirty two thousand. What are we buying for office equipment for thirty two thousand dollars?
Uh I'd have to look at the the detail on that, I can.
I think that might be the one that I asked you about, because we we changed where the computer equipment is.
Yes, we did.
Been listed in that category and they made a new category, so the new category shows is a hundred percent increase.
Let me go back.
And that could be what that is, but remember, we're also, administration has the largest part of wages in it.
Understood, I understand.
So the office.
I mean, but all across the board, so like code enforcement went up thirty thousand dollars since twenty twenty one?
But we share that with Wayne, we used to be part time, and now we share that with Wayne, and so it has an offsetting.
Revenue.
Revenue, because Wayne pays half of the cost of the code officer, well, two.
Yeah, so so I I don't want you to think that the cost of code hasn't gone up, it has, um we have a scaled increase. Um uh based on the contract that we have, but but Catherine's absolutely right, the big increase there is that we went from having a a a. Basically, two to three day a week code officer to having a budget for a full time code officer. That we then split the cost with the town of Wayne, so that actually um uh it it looks a lot worse than it than it actually is.
So our portion is eighty five, too?
Uh no, uh the total cost is eighty five.
So why are we not just showing what our what our part is?
Because we can't do that.
Oh, but then in revenues, there's an offset?
Exactly, you got it, yeah.
Okay, um general maintenance went up fifty three thousand since twenty, like in the last few years, so maintenance, what's the big difference on that? Is that again?
In part, it's wages, and so what you're looking at also again is is the actuals versus the budget, because we show past years in actual dollars. We show it at fiscal year twenty four and budget, there typically is a a a difference there. Um and and hopefully, if we do it right, in the positive, so that uh those actuals are are lower in in almost all cases. Than what was budgeted in that fiscal year, um so I would say that that if there's an increase over the bu- budgeted amounts, it's probably. Less than what you're seeing there, but um yeah, there there definitely have been increases, uh we have added some staff time. Uh to um account for for needs uh basically on the roads, in the cemeteries, and we're building maintenance. Uh but I I'd have to look back a couple of years and see what where that came from.
So if our actuals keep being higher than our budget, why don't we lower our budget a little closer to what we think it might be?
Well, we do, we do, but uh we don't wanna cut it too short, because then the auditors and the public rightfully would be concerned that we're budgeting. Too little and we're overspending, uh and that's uh basically my approach to budgeting and one that's been, uh I guess. Followed for, I think in the town of Reedfield for a very long time, is that you want to be conservative, uh you want to under budget your revenues. If at all, um just a little bit, and on the expense side, you always wanna budget a little bit more than you think you. Will need, just you have a small buffer there, uh and we, I think, do a a good job of that, but of course, there's always room to look and see. If we have a department, say, that that turns back thirty, fifty thousand dollars a year, we we would be looking at that, and that's actually one of the reasons. Why we're changing this accounting policy, so that money that isn't spent, doesn't go into the reserve accounts, it goes back into the general fund. Where it can be used to offset taxes the following year.
Okay, so we had like an increase just from last year of ten percent, that just seems, anyway, let me move on.
Well, I've got a lot of questions, go ahead. Remember that we um over these last three years have approved enormous pay increases. Because that's what the country has done, um when the pandemic hit, everybody, kind of, everybody. Got pandemic pay increases, and then there was cost of living increase, and then minimum wage went up. And so that. And so that that trickle down comes and hits us. And so I think that's where we see a lot of it. And I think we also have authorized an additional halftime position over that time period also, correct?
So so, yeah, we did increase the hours for one of the maintenance staff, looking back at five years or so, four or five years. The transfer station is one area where we actually do have an increase and you noted that, I think.
Not yet.
Yeah, and part of that is that what we've unfortunately been doing is having our maintenance staff covering when there's shortages at the transfer station, which are, there's a lot of them. And so what that means is it works out okay for the budget because we budget for some of that to happen, but that that means that they can't do the work that they're supposed to be doing on the roads and in the cemeteries because they're at the transfer station covering. Sometimes, you know, I'd say an average of ten to twelve hours a week over the course of the year, maybe more. And so that halftime position is going to make a big difference there.
Conservation Commission says twenty twenty three year to date is ten thousand, where usually it's like less than a thousand or?
Yes.
What's up with that?
That is, they did a town harvest, town forest harvest in order to get in there to actually cut the wood and carry it out, they had to make improvements to the road. So I think it was about nine thousand dollars in improvements made to the to the access road to the transfer station, to the, excuse me, the town farm forest. And that will be offset by use of reserves. And I guess that's an indirect way of saying it, really, the money raised from the harvest will offset the cost of that work and anything left will go back into.
I saw the harvest was actually a good plus. So that's a one time thing?
That's a one off.
Road in shape for future.
Yep.
Okay.
Well, Carol, thank you for spending so much time looking at this. These are great.
I'm sorry, and I missed the meeting on my, I was.
These are good questions. Other people will have these questions.
Yes, I just you see that dollar amount and it's like, I just want to understand.
I would point out that we have about five minutes left that we've appointed for this, just to to honor the agenda. So if anyone else has any any questions or care, if you want to continue.
I would like to, yes, thank you. And the transfer station also was up thirty thousand over the last couple of years?
Yeah, the the cost of fuel, cost of labor. When you think about how how prices move in in markets, certain industries are affected more by what's happening right now than others. The waste management system is incredibly reliant on labor and trucks and fuel. And that really, I think, paints most of the picture of of why we've seen those increases.
So that's the same with the solid waste transfer station was up like fourteen percent?
Yeah, so so it is that same increase of our our haulers, our vendors are charging more. But also, we do have that same, again, across the board, wage increase for the for the employees that we currently have. And we are adding more time. I I don't think it quite worked out to a full half position because we already had hours allocated, but to to make it so that the transfer station can be self sufficient most of the time without having to pilfer maintenance staff to cover and do that work when they should be out cutting brush and fixing potholes.
And then remember that we're paying fifty two percent, I believe, of that. And Wayne and Fayette together paid the other forty eight percent.
So you're paying fifty two of what's showing there?
Yeah, so that's another one, just like. Yeah, where there's offset revenue.
Okay.
And that's based on state property valuations is how that arrangement.
Okay, and there's an unclassified contingency, twenty five thousand, what is that?
That is the contingency that's available for the select board to use for anything that comes up that is not budgeted and which it it happens fairly frequently. I was actually looking at that before this meeting because I'm going to request that we take some of the expenses later on in the warrant, in the in the agenda out of that account. So it's really for unbudgeted expenditures. It used to be fifty thousand dollars and then it was cut back, I'd say, three or four years ago to twenty five.
Because we were rarely using it.
Twenty twenty one was six thousand, then it was zero, then it's twenty five thousand?
No, that's the budget and what we've actually used this year is the fifty five forty two.
So that seems really larger than maybe we need, no?
Well, it's a contingency, right? So it's there for the specific purpose of addressing unknown circumstances. You could you could look at lowering it again if if the board felt that was appropriate. But my my view is that twenty five thousand dollars on a on a three million dollar operating budget is modest.
Way less than one percent.
Okay, last thing. I I would just like maybe the warrant this time, like there is a lot in capital improvement that didn't have a lot of explanation to be like very itemized. When it's all lumped together with important things like the fire department and all kinds of other stuff. I still am not happy with the way the open space doubling a budget was kind of slipped in there, lumped in with everything else. And I think that dollar amount is very high. I would like that to be like a question of its own, because that was a doubling of a budget. I know it went through the budget process. But I I don't know, speculating on property as a town of twenty five hundred is, I don't know, I'd like that to maybe have a look by itself.
Well, there was a lot of detail on that at the budget meeting. And there is a detail of this. Eric has just given us the summary lines here. And so is that in the Budget Committee page where you can find the details?
Yeah, the detailed reports are are always included in the Budget Committee materials.
So you can find the the rest of it there.
But Carol, definitely, if you have other questions, give me a call, send me an email, stop by. I'm happy to talk more about it. And Dennis, if I could just add one more point before we wrap this up. I think the most important, one of the most important numbers people want to know is what it's going to, what this looks like for their their taxes. So for an average home.
On page what?
On, I guess it'd be the last page of the, it's the what's it, the what's it page. What's it going to cost me if I'm a resident? What's it going to cost me if I'm not?
One twenty three.
One twenty three. I do just want to point out that even with these projected large increases to the school budget and county and the increases on the town side, what we're looking at is about a two hundred and thirty dollar annual increase for an average property owner. So that's that's just the context that I think we should probably always or or very often at least address, if not end with, is that with the budget the way it is right now, that's the impact that that the average homeowner would say would be about twenty bucks a month.
Excellent.
Can I just leave it with the question of, is there anything at all on here that we can tighten our belt on? That is maybe not a have to do?
Yeah, well, we we're always looking at that. And so, yeah, I think that we'll continue to do that.
That's what the Budget Committee basically does.
I understand and I missed one and I had an emergency the last two weeks in my family. And I won't miss another one, but I seriously, it, I don't know who's on the Budget Committee, but I hope it's a diverse group. Next year, I would like to be on that. Because I think it's a fascinating thing and I think.
Select board members can't be on the Budget Committee and.
Well, we have a select board representative on the Budget Committee, don't we?
The Budget Committee is Martin Hennis, Andrew Tolman, Ed Sims, Ellen Schneider, and Christine Sammons.
I just.
Wednesday night is their next meeting.
I don't know, just people are hurting and this is just things that don't have to be done. This is really not the year for it.
Well, there there are a couple of things I'd just like to add to that. One is that all of, Eric, I think you were going to get the numbers together for me of how many people who applied for the senior tax freeze?
I think it was two hundred and ninety, the last check, but I'd have to look back. I did get that number for you.
So those people will not be having a tax increase of anything because the state is going to cover that and send that money to the town. That's the current program. So a lot of these people that I know we're all concerned about are people who are on fixed incomes and we had two hundred and ninety households that applied for that. So their taxes are going to not go up that amount.
So where does that?
The state go, the state is paying that to the town.
Someone asked me the other day if we had an age where with taxes don't go up on seniors, but it.
They have to ask, they have to ask.
And that was, that was widely publicized in the Kennebec Journal, on the state website, our website. And then the other thing is that we do have a fund that has rarely, or I'm not sure if it's ever been utilized.
Twice, I think.
Twice of money that we set aside from the select board when we sold a property that we had foreclosed on to help people who are in need and we just don't have anybody who asks.
How much money is that?
It's fifty thousand or a little more now.
One more simple thing. I think it was mentioned, the select board stipend would go up. I'd like to forego that. When I got on the select board, I didn't even know we got a stipend, but I think set an example, can we agree that that's not necessary?
Is that? Is it going, is it going up, Eric?
So so what we did, because there was discussion about increasing stipends in certain areas. Stipends, we looked at the, we looked at the stipends, they hadn't been increased for several years in most cases. So what we looked at was a ten percent increase on stipends across the board because it it really does get to be preferential to to just increase one stipend and not others, especially when they haven't seen an increase. So in order to try to make it a fair increase, we looked at ten percent, which really isn't, doesn't even keep pace with inflation because it hadn't been done for five years plus. So it's it's kind of, so that there is a ten percent across the board, including the select board stipends. And that's certainly something that, again, any of these things you folks could could look at and recommend a change to.
Maybe that's something that you can bring up with the Budget Committee on Wednesday.
Well, yeah, I mean, you certainly could. I I can, yeah, I'll ask.
I'll make a motion to extend the meeting for twenty, for fifteen minutes so we can finish our twenty minutes of business.
Second, it's been moved and seconded to extend our session by fifteen minutes. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you very much. Let's move on then. We have new business, twenty minutes for this should be pretty easy, so let's go through. Yes, fifteen, I suppose now. Twenty three, item twenty three zero eight zero is consider agreements with Casco Bay Advisors for consulting services related to a potential franchise agreement renewal with Charter Spectrum. And you can find that in your packet on page one twenty five. Again, this is, just just so everyone knows, this is a renewal of what we are currently working. This isn't, this is totally separate of any fiber to the home, any of that stuff. Eric, do you want to just briefly go over this?
Sure, yeah. Well, you're you're right, Dennis, and it is an offshoot of those discussions about broadband because the more we look at this issue, the more we find that this is about connectivity, not necessarily about one one solution or the other. We've always had cable as as a a second choice because it's an inferior technology. But they're here. We have an existing arrangement with them. And we could work with them to improve the level of service, the quality of service, and the distribution of service in our community through a franchise renewal. There's a lot of risks that come along with that. Basically, you're looking at a ten to fifteen year commitment with one company. And they, they honestly already have a lot of leverage over the negotiation process, but but we still have a little. And so it is worth our effort to try to negotiate something with them. What I will say is we don't have anything in the budget for this process for next year, but I think that we want to consider it depending on how things go with this first couple of 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 steps. And this should be the only meeting, I think, that we talk about what's happening with that negotiation. Otherwise, it should be an executive session because this is a negotiation, it is a competitive something that that should be discussed confidentially in order to prevent Spectrum from getting any more advantage in the negotiation process. So I I think this is a good direction for us to head because it can be a quick, potentially cost effective way for us to fill the gaps in our community and be kind of a backstop for what we hope is better service in the long run.
Great. Thank you very much.
And this franchise agreement does bring in revenue to the town every year. I will note that that revenue is paid by every person who has a subscription with Spectrum. That is noted on your bill, your franchise fee, and that is a pass through. It comes collected from each person who's a subscriber, goes to Spectrum and then Spectrum pays it to the town and it's around thirty.
Around thirty two thousand, I think, yeah.
Thousand dollars. So there is reason to spend some money to make sure that we get the best agreement we can because we want to keep the costs down for our subscribers, but give them the most benefit we can. So that's the reason to look at this. So Eric, I would recommend, or I would, I would move that we authorize the town managers spend up to three thousand dollars for work at Casco Bay Advisors pertaining to renegotiating the Charter Spectrum franchise agreement and to take those monies from the contingency account.
I second that. It's been moved and seconded to authorize the agreement with Casco Bay Advisors for our franchise agreement renewal. Is there any discussion about this authorization?
So this is money just to look at a proposal?
This is money to help develop a strategy and proposal to negotiate and begin negotiations with Charter Spectrum.
And that's because we need to renew our agreement with them?
We have to. Our our agreement expired probably a year or two before I started.
Twenty eleven, so we are eleven years out of our contract, but it still holds.
It's an evergreen type of contract, so.
It's governed by all kinds of state law.
Yeah, yeah.
And what are we gaining by entering into a new agreement for ten to fifteen years?
Yes, potentially.
That's what the state.
Potentially, yeah. We 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 couldn't do less, but they probably wouldn't agree to less. We probably, again, it's a negotiation, but the the discussion that we've had over the past several years is that this would be a way to take that group of eighty or ninety households in the town of Reedfield, some of them seasonal, that don't have internet service or don't have cable television and enable them to have cable television and subsequently internet service.
The franchise agreement is just for cable. The state does not regulate internet. But if a person doesn't have cable coming to their house, then they can't have internet through the cable. So that it and so that's part of the negotiation process is what what can you get Spectrum to give and what does the town have to give for that?
Yeah. Excellent. All in favor of this recommendation? Good, thank you very much. Our next item is to talk about our contract amendment with Kennebec Valley Council of Governments for comprehensive planning services. This is related to the work KV Cog is doing on the comprehensive plan. Basically, Eric, do you want to explain?
So our timeline got extended. The workload required of KV Cog and and town staff for that matter, has been pretty significantly added to. Originally, and for the last, I'd say, four months, KV Cog has kind of absorbed the added cost of 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 finalizing this process. However, looking at what's required over the next four months, four to four to six months, I'll say, to wrap this up well and effectively, there is a cost that they can't absorb out of, you know, our member fees or or whatever else might be out there. And so they're requesting a contract amendment that extends the timeframe, which is necessary, but also adds, I think it was six thousand.
Six thousand.
Six thousand dollars in in cost to finish the comprehensive plan, which would bring the total cost, I think, around maybe twenty five thousand dollars over a three year period. Or actually, it's twenty seven, no, it's more, twenty seven, twenty seven five over a three year period.
And this is, again, this is KV Cog has been absorbing this. It's no longer feasible and luckily for us, we know that we're looking to have this. we're looking to have this done, this this plan will wrap up. Excellent, any questions about this?
So what's Katie Cog's role in comprehensive plan we're talking about?
Yeah, so they.
Counseling us on.
Well, they basically write the plan.
They are.
They they help with the public outreach efforts, they attend the the public hearings, answer questions that are more technical in nature. They do a lot of the data research and development for pulling numbers from the state DOT, federal census data. They do all of that work to bring this together. They also will be doing going forward, again, finishing, putting the whole plan together. It's a multi hundred page document. They develop the maps for us, all of the maps that show our land areas, future land use, all of those things. That still needs to happen in this six month period. Also, they'll be helping us with the analysis of the survey results, which are are, I think, a big part of what we're gonna be, you know, incorporating into the comprehensive plan. So those are some of the key areas, the the survey analysis, the data collection, the public outreach and engagement, and mapping, GIS mapping.
When we approved this two plus years ago, it was a two year plan. And we had counted on a lot of committee input and a lot of work being done by the committees. And that did not happen. We have had a lot of people involved, but not people who were willing to put in a lot of time and effort in development of documents. And so somebody has to do that, and that's what this is for. And we have to have one, and Eric can't finish it. And so there we are, I'll make a motion to approve the amended contract for services for the Kennebec County Valley Council of Governments as presented and authorize the town manager to sign.
Second, it's been moved and seconded to accept the contract amendment for Kennebec Valley Council of Governments as it is included in the packet. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, sorry, where are we paying for this from?
So we could take it out of the planning line, but that is actually over expanded. So again, this is another recommendation would be that we take this out of the contingency because this was an unplanned overage.
Yep, so we'd be taking six thousand dollars.
Yes.
And we have about about twenty left. We had expended five thousand so far.
And we just spent three on the last motion.
Yes, yep, so it'll be an additional, so nine twelve, so leave us with about ten thousand in reserve.
My motion that the funds come from the contingency line.
Second, it's been moved and seconded that we this is amendment to the emotion that we note that the funds are coming out of the contingency line. We are voting on that amendment currently. All in favor of accepting the amendment to denote that it is coming out of the contingency, please raise your hand. Okay, all opposed to that, good, Carol Dorr and Boss is opposed to the contingency plan. The motion still carries, so now we are accepting this contract for twenty seven five, the additional six thousand dollars, as included on page one twenty seven in your packet. It's been moved, it's been seconded to accept that. All in favor, please raise your hand.
All in favor now for what?
For accepting the contract for services amendment for twenty seven five, making the additional six thousand out of the contingency which we just voted. Clear? Great, all in favor of agreeing to that? Good, all opposed, good, Carol Dorr and Boss is opposed to the extra cash money. Thank you very much.
When do we get to see what we have so far on this comprehensive? Is it actually in somewhere anywhere where it's accessible yet?
Yeah, it's on the website.
Okay.
The chapters are still in draft form, they haven't been completely compiled into the full plan, but all of the minutes for the committee are online, all of the not all, but majority of the materials that they used to develop this stuff's online, under the comprehensive plan page.
Moving on, item twenty three zero eighty two is assigning negotiators for the A F S C M E ninety three contract negotiation. I have volunteered to be a part of these negotiations. It it has been in the past, the select board chair and
Well, it's been other, it's been the select board, but this this time around, I would like to be involved with the negotiations because I think that originally I had stepped back from that role despite the fact that it's common for the for the manager to be involved because I I thought felt that we had too small of a of a unit. Like there's only three active members and five or six eligible, maybe a little bit more than that. But I I think in the long term, it's better for me to be involved with that negotiation process. So I would like to, if the board would found appropriate to be involved with that contract negotiation in large part because I have to deal with it every single day.
Absolutely.
I'd make a motion to appoint Eric and Eric Dyer and Dennis Price to be our negotiators and also to have the union notified that Anna Carl is no longer here, so she shouldn't be carbon copied on this.
Yeah, she has been, they have been notified of that.
Okay.
Ben Rodriguez is the new shop steward.
So Eric, can I just ask a question? You said there's only how many, two or three or four?
So we have, right now, we've got the the the, it's a long history here, but there are the two the two the the finance officer and the collections clerk are the two in the in the main office that are eligible members. And then we have the transfer station employees and the maintenance employees. So there's six total, if I'm counting right. And I think right now there are three that are actually members of the union.
So they can choose whether they want to join the union, of course.
Yes, they have to pay dues, I think, either way, but yeah.
Anything else?
I just have a question, so this is salaries for union employees?
This negotiates salaries, benefits, things like whether or not we have a, one of the things I'll just say it, we close whenever the state of Maine closes their offices, the state offices. And that's something I'd like to say, well, we can do a better job locally. We we know what the weather is here better than they do in Augusta or Prescott. And so I think that that's something that we should be you know, renegotiating, changing. They might say they want to have paid lunch breaks that extend an hour instead of half an hour. That type of stuff, so it's working conditions as well as wages and benefits.
So will this be done by budget time? So we have some idea where we're at?
It it it, I hope so, but it won't be done before, it won't be done before we have to finalize the budget. We're in an unfortunate negotiating position where we have to basically put our budget out there and then deal with the negotiations after the fact. I don't, I don't like that, that's something else that we might want to talk about is can we start negotiating? Or maybe do a short contract and then negotiate earlier so that we're not having to put our cards on the table with wage increases before we start negotiating.
Good call, yeah. But that's. That's why you should be involved, absolutely.
So because we do have a union, we have to deal with them, and we have to have someone who's going to do that, so I have a motion on the table.
Yeah, so it's been moved to to do that, thank you, Steve, and it's second for Eric and I to handle these negotiations. Any further discussion? Great, all in favor? All right, thank you so much. Last but not least.
To extend the meeting for five minutes.
Second, thank you, all in favor? Thank you. The last item twenty three zero eighty three is consider approval of commercial hauler permits for the transfer station. You can see they are in your packet.
Did we really just get one?
We got one, we should have a second one, but Jimmy, I get all this, one of the contractors is having a little trouble coming up with the money. It's not the end of the world if if this doesn't happen.
Tonight?
Tonight, so I I am.
Yeah.
I'm expecting we'll bring another one of these back in a in a couple of weeks to a month.
So let's approve the one that we have here now. Okay, great.
How many do we have currently?
We 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 really should just have two.
So. Okay, but are currently, aren't there three contracts out there?
I'll have to think about that because we we had like five, and then a couple of them went away and consolidated.
So we had Arches and Simmons and.
Arches and and Galush and Simmons, I think, is defunct.
No, Simmons is.
Then it's, then it's Galush, I think that we're one of, yeah, there's been some consolidation, I'll have to look back.
It doesn't matter, we we have this here and we can approve, we see what they have, Simmons Trucking. Their various plans coming on Thursday. Is there any discussion or any other, anything else the select board for this commercial hauler permit? I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
It's been moved, is there a second? Good, it's moved in second to approve the commercial hauler permit for Simmons Trucking. Is there any further discussion? I just want to point out, when we do things like this, when we approve these, when we approve alcohol licenses, when we do that, we are supporting business intent. And so I just love that, you know, it 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 might not always be the new flashy business opening, but there's certainly businesses in Reed Field that are thriving, that are that are that are functioning well. And all they need from us is the thumbs up to continue doing that. So I just, I want, I think that's important for us to remember, all in favor? Excellent, thank you very much. I would entertain. Good, it's been moved.
Was there Somerset Communications Center?
Yeah, that's an FYI. So, but if you want to adjourn, I can talk about it a little bit.
Yes.
Well, so basically, the FYI there was that Somerset County is no longer going to be providing our dispatch services, those will have to go someplace else. Short term, we're going to be working with Augusta and Winthrop to continue to provide those services. There's a lot going on here, this is not the last you'll hear about this, it's an important function, and yeah, we'll be talking about it again.
Yeah.
And we, for a very specific reason, chose not to go with this center in Augusta, but went with Somerset County, correct, in the past?
Yes, but essentially.
That's over.
Yeah.
It's not available, so we can't use it.
We can't use it anymore, but we do have, the service will continue. We just need to talk about how to do it best.
Great. There's a motion on the floor to adjourn, all in favor? Thank you very much. We're done.